I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my people, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I have looked at some vans. And vans that I've looked at is way too low. Especially when we're going through someone's driveway and there's potholes as big as a house. They're gonna drag on the bottom. And I don't think they'll work. Especially if I have to put it in full wheel drive. If I go up Route Hill to get to a dog that they dump all the time up there. Black Run, when I go up Coons' driveway, it's a mess. You gotta go through the water, go through the huge potholes, because they don't maintain it. So.
You just don't want a van, do you?
I don't want a van. I don't want a van, but it's the truth.
Well, I just.
It is the truth. I mean, the van will drag. You may say to me, when they come to help us that day, they took their new van and they drug on the bottom. So, I mean.
Well, that's what we need to know. It's one or the other. I know the van, it seemed like they had shelter in the van. Because they would be enclosed, but I didn't think about dragging bottom in certain places you have to drive.
Yeah, there are some traffic places.
The other two trucks that we had, the van was running condition.
For now. I don't know how long.
What mileage do we have on those trucks?
Hmm, they're over a hundred and seventy. I do believe. But, I mean, they've, they've took us a long ways and I've had to repair this. What if you, well, I had to repair that transmission in that one, that one time. And it was only sixty thousand miles on it, and I had to replace it. So.
Kathy, you told me, I was listening to you this morning, if you said something about cotton.
Because the utility vans up there.
Well. Then we'll be looking at the truck.
No, we're for it, please.
Well.
You don't get your choice in that. You can only go so far with it. I don't, I don't like the old, period, let's get a lamb. I like dogs. You don't get to pick and choose which one you get. We take, we'll get.
Just check and see what, we can get three, look at a Chevy, look at four, look at a lamb.
Oh, yeah, who does? Nissan?
That's price. Well, you know, you want crew cab, I understand. I don't know about that.
Yeah, because of all the equipment we carry.
Who do you, who do you deal with out of Norris?
Hmm, what is the guy's name?
Is it Jerry Goshman?
Hmm, no, it was one of Amnote's. Because they dealt with her. She's bought several vehicles from them and they know her really well.
It might be advisable maybe to talk to the management there instead of just a salesperson and let them know who it's for and what, what it's for.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah.
Well, I did that and then, because the truck was a lot more than that and they brought it down. And then they added on the beeper and then the camper shell. And it turned to fifty-one, I think. I don't know. But I'll look, I, but I have to have an eight-foot bed. Because then cages will not go, because of the well wells.
I got you.
So.
What makes the other trucks?
GMs. I mean, they work. I just, I mean, the other day we was downing one truck because he had to have the rotors replaced in the one truck, so that took a while. So then we only had one truck out on the road.
When I was superintendent, we liked to have the same make bus throughout the entire fleet. I don't think it makes any difference. That's all it could be. Three-year-old make. Right. So if it's Ford, it's a Ford. If it's a lamb, it's a lamb. If it's a Chevy, somewhere along the way, then that's all it is. Get the prices given to us and we'll move on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will need a recruit.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Governor, I received something from the attorneys pertaining to the litigation on the opioid litigation. On the retention, we intend to file a supplemental plea for the courts and provide litigation hold and pending. Dates for those local government clients whose response to this email, all of the four, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. It's just, and as Brad said, this needs to go out to every department head. Retention of records, any information that is received by any person on the courthouse. Where the Sheriff's Department needs to retain those records on the opioid. So I need a motion to adopt this. We'll leave this up to all the departments. So, second, all in favor? Senator, Senator, I would just like to meet it. That's effective. We're gonna send it in today immediately. So, so. We were looking for, the attorneys when this started many years ago, didn't say anything about retention. I think Kathy, you and I have kept everything that we received pertaining to the opioid litigation, everything. But they want to make sure this, this house, any, any other department head, that they're retaining that information also. I serve on a high board, so I get more information than you guys get. I'm glad about that.
I'm delighted.
Bills for the week. You look through here, there's a big one for Seacoast, over one million dollars. The bills come to one million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars and eighty-six cents.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Then an hour analysis. Two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. So. Second, all in favor? Request for transfer of funds between accounts from Ross County. This is from the treasurer from general funds. Must submit prepayment toward postage for two thousand and twenty-five first half election. This is from group insurance. This applies fifteen thousand dollars. Transfer between accounts. Yeah. So moved. Second, all in favor? This is a request for transfer of funds between accounts for Ross County and the treasurer from Fund Two-Four-Two Tax Certificate. Recover a receipt refund, nine hundred dollars. This comes from postage fees to refunds, nine hundred dollars. So. Second, all in favor? This is transfer of funds between accounts from Ross County from the Ross County Board of Elections from general funds. Supplies to other expenses. Funds needed for reimbursement for rental truck during election, Deputy Director Jessica Ott. Three thousand five hundred dollars.
Transfer.
Transfer from supplies to other expenses.
So moved.
That was Paul Dale. Machines, when I pick up the machines. Second, all in favor? Request for transfer of funds between accounts from the Ross County Board of Elections from general. Funds needed to contract services, transferring funds from supplies to contracted services. Twenty thousand dollars. So moved. Second, all in favor? Request for transfer of funds between accounts from our own state sheriff's office, from the CLE. Equipment needed for ERP, radios needed for jail division correction officers. Money needed for end-of-year expenses. Contract services to equipment, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Contract services from equipment, forty thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and eleven cents. Contract services to medical, fifty-five thousand. Contract services to other expenses, five thousand. And supplies to equipment, five thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars for total one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Second, all in favor? Transfer of funds from the Ross County Sheriff's Office and CLE. Cost of equipment for communications, communication helmets for motorcycles. Gasoline to equipment, five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? All right.
Were you aware that one of those deputies had an accident on a motorcycle? In the year of one of those.
Who was that?
Can you remember his name? He's fine and.
Brian Smith or?
One of Brian Smith.
He fault?
He fault. That's who it was.
Well, this is the time of the year that you stay on the deer on the side of the road. You can't get worse than the next one.
Now you get one of those on the road, something thirty-five miles an hour.
I can't imagine hitting one on the road with a car.
He didn't get hurt or anything like that?
He wasn't hurt, I guess. Motorcycle was pretty messed up, I guess.
So we're gonna start all over on scratch, because we just got the brand new motorcycle. You should have ruined one from the.
Yeah.
A lot of the deer add insurance.
Yeah.
Transfer of funds between accounts from the commissioners to general funds. This is for the electric service. For electric at the service center. Supplies to utilities, six thousand, and rentals to utilities, six thousand, for twelve thousand dollars. So moved. Second, all in favor? Request for appropriation of funds from Ross County Avoca. To return unused funds to the state. Two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Return the funds to the state. How much do you want to return your funds to?
Hundred bucks. You're going to mail it again?
Yeah.
Appropriation of funds from the commissioners to general. For JDC monthly payments for November services. Other expenses, fifty thousand dollars. Second, all in favor? The contracts of plan. The Board of Commissioners will appoint the recommendations to steering committee. Where the comprehensive plan will be James Lowe from the Board of Commissioners. Nancy Ames. Wayne McLaughlin. We need a motion on that. So, second, all in favor? On the economic development study team. Jack Ewerson, representing the board and the airport, David Pickerton, Pickerton, and Kurt McAllister.
So moved.
Second. All right. All in favor?
We'll submit to change after the first year.
Congratulations. I can't watch the ball like that.
Me neither.
I think there will be an appointment there. I'm sure that you will get that under control.
Sure. Use all my organizational prowess.
This is from Ross County Planning Department memorandum. The two thousand and three water pollution control lung fund is complete. All the funds have been expended, fully signed and filed like exhibit, as requested by the EPA. So moved. Second, all in favor? This is being sent to Governor Mike DeWine, President Matt Hufnman, and Speaker Jason Stevens. We, the undersigned commissioners of the counties in rural Ohio, writing to request your urgent attention to the final weeks of this internal assembly to address the needs of the farmers and rural Ohioans. That have endured significant hardships this year due to the extreme drought disaster has had, and that devastating impact on our community. The counties affected are Athens, Belmont, Fairfield, Fayette, Gallia, Berne, Harrison, Highland, Hawking. Jackson, Jefferson, Madison, Megs, Monroe, Morgan. Muskegon, Noble, Perry, Pickaway, Pike, Ross, Benton, and Washington. The historic drought has led to job losses, housing instability, and food insecurity. Region requires the needed support to recover from these hardships. And propose appropriations from House Bill six eighty-three, which provided a lifeline that empowers farmers to rebuild, maintain operations, and keep family farms healthy.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
You guys gotta give that, right? I'm gonna kick that if you're just dropping crazy. Or whoever's on the other line.
This is a resolution. To appoint the commissioners appointments to Mr. Randy Urey to the Ross County Board of Development. Developmental Distilleries. To the term for Michael Banks commencing one-one of two thousand and twenty-five through twelve-thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-six. Motion. So moved. Second, all in favor? We have an application to the county commissioners for appropriation to attend a meeting and convention. The undersigned respectfully makes application. For appropriation of approximately sixty-five dollars per mile and four hundred and ninety dollars for lodging. For the ORA winter continuing education meeting at Emboflee Suites in Hilton. Columbus Dublin, five-one-oh-oh, Upper Metro Place, Dublin, Ohio. This is for Kathy Dunn.
Two.
Ten, one, and why, but seven.
I think that's a fair question. Isn't that something?
Yeah.
That ought to be asked. Somebody's supposed to be made.
She's still the auditor until January the first.
She ain't the auditor.
I'm sorry.
I'm teaching.
She's still recorded. That's January the first.
I understand. Well, okay.
This is where the Ross County Planning Commission Department attaches a grant agreement between the High Department of Development and the Ross County Commissioners for the use of a CDVG grant for the improved Adelphi Storm Sewer Critical Infrastructure Project. Five hundred thousand dollars. So moved. Second, all in favor? All right.
So moved the five damn back to.
So we got it. This is the holiday schedule for the two thousand and twenty-five. Year. We need approval. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen holidays. More? Second, all in favor? Brad, anything for the good? David, congratulations.
Thank you. Excited.
I think I motion approved the minutes of the last meeting.
Second, all in favor? I'll be happy to, it's over DJ, we're the first.
That's the art of Q for the construction manager risk for the jail project.
And approve this and get it posted, please.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Then I have some information that you're talking about, I'll share with you. Here's the information from Union County on the space operator, all the documents that they provided to me. So we can start thinking about that, if we can do.
Why don't you get the airport board on, we just got here. Communicate with them and make sure to get their input as to what they'd like to see evolved out of it.
Talking about the. Yeah, they're not actually the board, they're just the, what do they call it?
What's what they have at, what they have at the C D.
Yeah. But if you want that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. It's just.
Who holds on that now, Kathy?
I don't know. It's stuck in my nose. I got to watch. It's been a long time.
That's all I was saying, because he retired while I was.
It's been a long time since they've gotten together.
Yeah, we had all the insurance company, the young lady off the trust company.
Megan Carroll.
Megan Carroll.
I think she got off the, didn't she, or did she? I mean, last time they met was when Natalie and I helped her. Yeah, some occasion.
Is Rick Kirk, is he on? Excuse me, Rick Kirk?
I think he is. It was Rick and Larry. And the phone was Megan. I thought we replaced her for some reason, but maybe not.
But the only one where he'd be close that I can remember was the.
Where they hold their old gentleman, that was on there.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Brad. Did we get any more from any?
Hi, sir.
On their table.
Do we get any from anybody else?
I haven't let this out. This is just, no. But I meant, I meant this guy.
Okay.
This was a guy that got recommended to me last day.
Okay.
Because they had. And it's just paperwork they used to, to go out to, you know, to find somebody to do.
Sir.
I'm surprised we haven't heard any.
Especially at my last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. She might have seen that off of you.
Good morning.
Morning, Brad. Good morning, Commissioner, sir. Morning, sir. What's this? You getting retired, are you already?
No chance of him?
Calling me on a game is waiting to play Santa Claus.
They have a face.
You started a lecture.
You're gonna find out when you get in your seventies, you don't gain anything. You'll start losing. And really, that's a bad time to start losing weight, because when you get sick, you lose too much weight, you don't have enough protein. And you go to the doctor or the hospital. They better try to pump you full of protein to get you to heal. So I'm eating my hostess cupcakes and my M and Ms on a daily basis, a high frequency of those, along with a good meal. I just.
See, when I finish this month, you can't call me that anymore.
It'll start to work. You'll be seventy?
I'll be seventy this, this month. Oh.
Did I, did we play against each other?
Uh huh.
I graduated Sunday one.
I graduated Sunday three.
He probably watched me.
Well, I graduated as a seventy-four.
Seventy-two. Wow, seven months.
Seventy-five. I just created.
But you're, you graduated, David.
Twenty thirteen.
What was that again?
Twenty thirteen.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Let's get into it.
Okay.
What's this?
Yeah, this is. This is the main, this is the main thirty-third, sir.
Chief Paul's got some information this morning. I'll let you discuss that and then we'll have Kirk to do the, okay?
State of Ohio finally released its vehicle bids. Fords are forty-four thousand, just the vehicle. Chevys are forty-eight-five, and Dodges are forty-one-nine. So the prices are continuing to increase.
Most.
But most is the Dodge at forty-one-nine, and that's just vehicle. That is no equipment to make them patrol, Brad.
Well, what that's the same, that's the same, what Ford did they put in here?
They are putting that in the Ford Explorer piece package.
I thought Ford wasn't gonna do that in.
That's what we thought as well, and they have brought one out of that forty-four thousand.
And I think what we're seeing is when the automobile industry settled their union contract, that's being passed off to the consumer. Because these prices definitely went up from what we've been paying in the past. Of course.
What we get for the last Dodgers?
Last Dodgers were somewhere around thirty-eight. And that's again for the vehicle, not the build outs.
We expect the build outs are gonna increase.
And that's, again, part of our complaints to the, to the vehicle companies. Is you keep making these minor changes that make the movement of the equipment, such as the shields.
Yeah, but it's year from year.
You can't go year to year like we used to do with the Crown Toreos.
How's the Durango handle versus the Explorer?
We're, we're gonna discuss that in our meeting. I'll tell you what, we, we've got several of the COVID Fords that were produced during the COVID year, transmissions are junk in them. I mean, even mine. I've got probably twenty-six thousand miles on my car. And if you try to get in traffic and accelerate, just die. I mean, it just falls on its face. It's still running, it falls on its face and takes a little while for pickup. It's just a fall in the transmission, but they've never come back with the corrective action for it.
So that's a pretty poor show for a pursuit vehicle.
It is, absolutely. And, and you know, right now the Dodgers, I think, were having some minor issues.
We've got sixty Dodgers on, on the streets. Performance so far has been adequate. I wouldn't say stellar. I wouldn't say pleased for the price we have to extend for it. But we still have them on the streets. We're somewhere in the six to nine thousand mile range at this point, so it's pretty early in the game. We've got three that are inbound to us as they finish the build-out stage. Our fleet is in decent shape. But as you know, we gotta go, and we're so big that the mileage that we put on them shortens their life expectancies considerably. Which is a continual worry for us.
TJ, when they make those cars? When they make those. When they made exclusively for law enforcement.
They are built that way, yes. So they engineer a heavier duty frame with extra electricity. Built into them for all the radio components and computer components. The suspension systems are more durable. We still find out. We still find out that we're having problems with transmissions, wheel bearings. We've also had some problems with the electrical processes that are in these, and these cars are so complicated. It kind of made them brittle because of all of the electronics that, that we use.
That's even, that's even my truck, a whole lot of them is all Lincoln.
Yep.
I don't like when the transmission doesn't pick up.
Hmm, myself neither.
They're not linkage transmissions anymore, they're, they're actuators. So it's all computer sensor, you know, it detects the pressure on the pedal and it reacts to the computer systems. If there's hesitation, that's what you get in the vehicles performance. And unfortunately, you know, transmissions from our generation, they're not building anymore.
An A I starts to run next week.
That'd be nice.
Have them to keep an eye on that oil on them Dodgers.
That's what I've been seeing, that they have problems with.
It's the same, it's the same thing they do with the, with the chargers.
Chargers. Now, the nice thing is, we don't.
The same thing you did or what?
Dodge didn't change that?
No, it's still same management.
It's still, you know, you put the oil up here, but the oil was down here, it has to go through all this and then there's a little piece in there that keeps breaking off and Dodge won't fix it.
It's plastic.
Yeah, it's a piece, it's a plastic piece. I had the one that I drew, that Charger I drew, I took it to get it fixed and the guy fixed it with duct tape. And said, check your oil every other day. I'm not going to say who it was, but.
Well, but this is, and again, that's that, that problem in production that we see, that they, they put lesser into the equipment. Thanks of how it operates. And we bear the burden for the repairs and the repairs often are extensive because these little pieces are buried deep into the mechanicals. It takes a specialized person and equipment and time to get to it.
Used to be a time you could work on your own car.
Used to be. Changed them in my garage driveway for years.
Same thing, that was that to drive up on there.
So I will let Krypton go over the budget, this is probably her twenty fourth edition that she's kind of, we've made so many changes. As we go along, because our best is coming up, where we have to do the best replacements and all that, so I will let her.
Can I ask you a question before we get into that? Are all the, are all the counties increasing their cost to hold inmates?
Yes.
I said, the one came at a hundred dollars a day.
Well, we, yeah, and, and you know, the one we deal with, they, they're ninety. Like I said, if you got a jail that's got room, you, you can, you can offset your costs so much, it's, it's amazing if you, if you have a jail that's got room, but. And, and they're seeing that, you know, Bay County with what we were paying, I took that fifty year loan. To the government, took that fifty year loan and I talked to Sheriff Stanford, says, will be paid off because of his housing costs. He, he's paid for that loan in what, five or six years, how long it's been up, seven? Eighty five. So, I mean, he's paid off fifty year loan in five years because of that.
Huh?
Bayet. Bayet. So it, like I said. Inmates face now as a prime. You know, commodity, if you've got it, you can sell it because again, Pike County's going eight, eight hours one way to drop off their inmates and eight hours back.
But is Pike County going with some other county to build a?
Pike County's looking to go with Jackson, Jackson's supposedly going to be building, they're going to be going with, with Pike County and.
Is it, uh, Galia?
No, it's a, it's a.
So it's one of the other southern, southern.
Wallace. I know they were talking about going with them too, because they turned their money down.
Right. Yeah, yeah, you turned theirs down, didn't you?
Yes. So they, so.
They're, they're looking to build them.
They're, they're looking, the Jackson's going building up the, for three counties, so.
Cause I know when Pike and Ja, I knew Pike and Jackson's going to go together, they called up here and they, I talked to them and they said, well. I thought they were calling to see if we wanted to go in with them two for three county jail. Reasonally, their question was to me was, how many inmates can you send to us? It wasn't that, well, partner with you.
Well, because they want to pay off their facility and get rid of their overheads to take them mixed money.
The contractor we had with Fayette County. Before the, when the last jail we had, is this still good?
Uh, I believe it expires in January.
January, and then this new one takes over in January, which is ninety dollars.
Right, I was, I, I had my fingers crossed, it was still good until we at least get. This next project done at the jail. It seemed like they were sixty five, seventy, seventy five dollars.
Well, again, you look at wage cost increases, utility cost increases, medical cost increases, and they pass those along to the, to the rental.
And, and I know as far as what your comment was, it is, I know Paul's been in touch with. Your adults attention about housing, some of our people into the gym, house them in there to send them out, right?
We got a variance for fifteen beds in the gym, that's all they give us due to the shower, all that, so.
I, I know you're using them now, but how many people can be in the uniform, right?
Ten, eleven?
Um, ten.
That, that could be used for a brief period of time, is this?
Yeah, it could, it would be very select, but I mean, if we got a.
Yeah.
Our numbers stay the way they are. Until we do that large pod with thirty eight beds, I think we'll, we'll be able to switch them around pretty much if the numbers stay where they're at.
That's good.
Yeah.
What's the maximum number we're going to be?
One fifty five.
At a time, no, at a time during the.
It's thirty eight.
Thirty eight.
Okay.
But that's something we, you know, I, I'm still appreciative of the grant we got for that because these guys are still. You know, doing what, we got to check them every day, just to make sure they're not getting out and that metal will alleviate a lot of that. And, and really protect this community and keep them people where they need to be and not let them get out, so. We had one predator describe, a predator see holding wall, predator go out holding wall. That's what he said.
Depends on how thick holding wall is.
Yeah, so that's what we're trying to keep from the holding wall and I think that metal will greatly.
Fisher, when you did, when you did test the budget stuff, did you add for them inmates going out into this budget?
So, past few years, we've always added the five hundreds of thousands of dollars that's in there. We've asked for each year because we've always thought the possibility of it having in there, so it's still in our contract service of having that in our budget.
And this year will be returning them. Three hundred thousand, forty thousand of that, that we didn't use, you know. We did have to make some best purchase at the investment for that. It just coming up on the technical bed, it has to be replaced and we're going to put those guys, the front people in the line of bullets. I'm going, I'm going, everything I can to ensure their safety, so. It was minus fifteen thousand.
For the renovations to the jail, it's a one in a thirty year time.
I know, I know.
They just were lucky enough to be here doing it every time. And the steel on the wall, that, that is a plus for the facility.
It is.
And as you said earlier, it was great that we could procure that grant to get that work done. It's amazing how far. If you take a million dollars and you look at a million dollars. After the planning and the drawings and everything gets done, a million dollars doesn't really go very far anymore. No, it doesn't. I mean, if it's in your pocket and you're walking around, then maybe, you could maybe go for it, but when you're going to project, everybody's got their fingers in the side.
But again, I, I want to say hats off to Brad and all that he's accomplished with his jail, jail project. I mean, he's, he's done amazing over there as far as coming over and helping us, you know, working with the wind to get that done and. You know, it's, it's got to be somebody that stays on top of things to get things done, he's done an outstanding job.
Nobody knows how much Brad can, it's a, it's a thankless job, but. That, that project, it opening is next Monday.
Yeah.
So it'll be, if the plan is to start that January first.
Oh, and I know we've talked about trying to get it done this year, but I mean, it is what it is and. You know, thank God we got the grant dollars and we just went after more grant dollars for other things. I know the body worn cameras, even though we got them, you know, there's money out there that will offset some of our costs and you're looking at a grant on how much on that.
Depending, the state released five million dollars for body worn video equipment in storage. So we're looking to transition from one company, which is raising, the company currently used, it's raising its cost almost by double. To.
Hundred thousand.
Which is about half of that.
Is that we can see it's raising? No, uh, what it is, is Axon is who we have our body cameras from. They went from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, Christian is that right in that area and then. We, Motorola came out with a camera system now that's half of that and we're, we're going to go with that. I mean, it's pretty much on the same platform. The only thing Axon has advantage of is when the officer got shot at the back door, they just come out with the new cameras that's on, on. The fire, bullets being fired, that camera activated with playback, but these other cameras, they have such a playback that you could still get that. You understand where Axon goes back about one to three minutes on playbacks, these ones go back even further, so you could, you could get that if you ever had that, so. And, and half the cost, you know, we're, we're looking every day to save money, we're, we're going through all the things at the jails, the, you know, all the. Cleaning supplies and all that, we are on a daily basis, we're looking at everything we spend because we know we're the highest impact on the budget and we're trying to do everything we can to offset costs, you know. I hate to keep coming over asking for money, but you know, we're doing everything we can to.
Well, good, okay. We're national.
Well, but do you see this? We just don't want you to think, okay?
TJ, on the, on the body cameras.
Yes.
Can the officer turn that off?
They can. However, we have policy in place that tells them when.
Yeah, I, I watched his trial in Columbus where the.
Yes.
The camera came on after the shooting.
Right, yes. And that can happen, Eric at the back door, he didn't have his body running at that, that point. But the technology that's in these systems.
It picked it up.
It picked it up and it still works, should it occur with the new system.
You know. One thing, we have policy in place for that, but one thing we always got to try to bolster safety, because before anything. If somebody stops somebody and they don't have their camera on immediately, he's got to get out and take action. You know, you've got, you've got to look at your policy and say, is this okay? You know, because his thing might have been life and death versus turning on that camera and taking that time of thinking about that. You're going to keep about officer safety first and, and they should be, so we always want to consider that.
And it is apples, apples, not apple oranges, I mean.
Correct. It is an apple, and actually, they like the storage software a little better with Motorola.
And, and.
And I believe they're planning to present that to the commissioners. When they get every, when the contract gets approved, the content formed from the prosecutor's office. And then have these folks bring in and demonstrate to you what this change will look like for the county.
And Axon's always led the way in the tasers and the body cameras, so now we're getting good competitive, you know. Pricing with some others that, that's going to play an important role in getting those prices down, they've been the only game in town, so.
Good, let's go for this smiley face.
You're on.
We'll start with low and then our salaries that we have are increases, since we're under negotiation. So I need to make sure that we just went ahead and estimated for a possibility of a five percent increase.
We just showed that. But we show high on, on the year that we, we're going to get negotiations, we always show it high to see what it all says, so.
Okay, the law's increasing, I have at the bottom total of three hundred and seventy five thousand, two hundred and fifty nine ninety nine, it's going to be an increase with a five percent. And the rest of the increase is going to be under expenses. We're asking for increase of a hundred and forty nine, that's on the second page, three hundred and sixteen dollars. That's going to be our central square contract, which has expired, so we're going kind of a year to year basis of what they've given us. The contract is behind that and it shows what it's gone from, from last year's to this one. And it's just like a three thousand dollar increase, of course, we do percentages across the board for jail and then civil. We have our lease agreement. So, and there's only our, this will be our last payment that we have, so there's no change in that. Then our Axon body cams that we took over and that's our next contract that's behind. And it shows half the cost on that one. And we're looking at, it was an increase of forty eight thousand. And that's a split between the jail and the law. Axon tasers, we don't have that one this year, so it's going to be the same, there's no change in our payment. And we always have a Motorola software underneath that goes through our P and R. And that's from last year's, it was a thirteen thousand, so we're not asking any change in. Assuming it's probably staying the same. And we can do a three percent increase over our miscellaneous of our contacts that we usually have in software that we do throughout the year. And next would be our utilities, we went ahead and did a seven percent increase. We've pretty much stayed out on costs this year. Ironically enough, we seem to be pretty good.
I agree with that.
So.
Seems like they, everything, all the electric prices have gone up.
Yeah, we've done pretty good, we've had a couple bills that were a little bit higher than what we had anticipated, but across the board, we're doing fairly well for the rest of the year. Um, training, even though we did not use all of our training, because we did get, Grant, I think we got some deductions in ours, we want to keep it the same. Which includes for two deputies for a potter. Supplies, we're asking for no change, keeping it the same. Gasoline, it's, from what our usage of what we have right now, we're still doing no more than four dollars a gallon as estimate. Never really went that high, but that kind of buffer that's between, so it increases seventeen thousand plus. Our equipment that we have in the law, sending communications, they want five more portables, three mobiles, which would be seventeen thousand five plus. And then the car purchases, I was told to go ahead and just leave as we had from last year, which we're asking for the five cars with build outs at an estimate of fifty three. So that might be a possibility and that might be low. And then, and the other expenses, we have twenty vests, which is additional, ten purchases of those, twenty for our carriers, which were added additional to that ten to it. So it'd be twenty total on both of those. And we have armory, the capital improvement, we're wanting to increase the size of the armory and that's thirty thousand. And then we just do a three percent increase.
The last couple of years, the ammo purchase, which is twenty third thousand dollar a year, we've been taking that out of our concealed handgun license. We're allowed to do that by law, so we've been taking that purchase out of there, which keeps the county from having to pay that after.
You're not getting, are you getting just as many concealed carry people coming in?
It's starting to decline because you don't have to open carry in Ohio now. Is the armory in the basement? Huh?
Is the armory?
The armory is in the basement and right now, the reason we want to increase the size of the, of the armory is. We keep all of our, our swap weapons in there too, our special weapons and tactics weapons, we keep them in there, but we keep them in a thing so we can wield upstairs well. If you go in there for anything, you have to take that card out, you have to move stuff, it, it's just so jam full of stuff that. Even if you want to go in and get one box of shells, you have to move everything out of the armory to get to the cabinet, to open the cabinet to get a box of shells. It's just, we just need to increase the size of that. Also, I'm looking, as far as the E R T, the emergency response team, which uses a special weapon. I'm looking at getting rid of all of our multi fire weapons, you know, that, that's automatic. We don't need them in today's society for the simple reason, you got to count for every bullet, you just can't let somebody go out there and start firing around, so. We're looking at all semi automatic weapons. This way, I will not keep an automatic weapon in any of the cruisers. For the simple reason, if somebody steals that, that's really going to be the accountability issue, which we do have semi weapons in every car because of the rural settings that, that we respond to. So when we go to. These semi fire weapons, you know, it will help because the, the, the on duty E R T people can keep those in their car and they don't have to refer to the. You know, wait on somebody to go to the armory, get their weapons and bring it out to them, they'll have it with them, so that'll help us and, but we still are going to need. You know, with all the stuff we have in the armory to build that armory over on there. you know, with all the stuff we have in the armory to build that armory over on there.
Is there any structural distinction in the armory? Any explosives in that building or just more?
No, no, we at one time
It's just a room, isn't it? That's what I thought.
It needs a room, but we have safes in there that are uh blast resistant.
Yeah, they're blast resistant.
So we separate those explosives from the open air of the rest of the building, so we would at least have an ability to get down there in the case of a fire.
At one time, we were looking at explosive entries and we had them out to the vocational school building, a lockbox for that uh that, you know, explosive proof and that way if you, because we would have had like Penn, PETN, uh dynamite, you know, that kind of stuff, uh you know, Decord, we would have had that stuff stored in there, but we never, we never went to that. We we did the the schooling on it and all that and the research and at that time, we just didn't go to it, so.
Still want to jail, Bullenup?
Huh?
I just still want to jail.
I don't want to jail Bullenup either, what's happening here? Would it sure tail?
Sheriff, you still have the same plan, you still have the cross?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, that that would be a perfect area over there, it would really, could almost double the size we got now, which for any future things that would it would. And not just a waste of space right now.
Is that is that a budget based on the on the estimate that we gave you guys?
Mm-hmm. Sorry, I keep interrupting.
On the jail side, for our salary increase across forty-five percent, we're looking at a difference of five hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and two dollars sixty cents. And then our expense side, we're asking for a hundred and three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-one cents. So under our contract service, that's again, that central square where we have to do the split. And as well as, at least we're asking for no change, that Axon where we split the increase on that. And then we do have, that's where I have the inmate off-site housing. And major art which says go ahead and leave that at that with that five hundred thousand that we have. And then we just did a three percent cost increase for our regular contracts and software. Training again, then not all of it was used, we're still asking to have that in there. For some which we tell no change, supplies, we just did a three percent cost increase.
I I was talking to just say. Paul, if we if we had anybody from any of the county come here and we housed?
Yes. Uh, usually with Fayette, uh we'll switch out. So like right now, we have two inmates up there, we are, we housed one here recently, shooting, not there now, but they won't charge us, they it offsets. Uh, yeah, just us and Fayette County when it comes to, you know, it might be a nexus, so we send one up there, same way with them. If they have a nexus in the jail, they'll send them down to us and we just offset the charges.
Okay. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Jail for surprise, may or may said to go ahead and just increase thirty thousand dollars, that should get us through with the equipment. Once we've been adding the van all the past couple of years, we have the van being purchased this year, so we should be done with those, so I went ahead and deducted that off there, but we are adding in-site replacement. We are able to do one of the services here, there are three, so each year we're going to request to have the next one done. So next year, we're hoping to replace another server and then the following year. And then there's the cost purchase of five Dell computers and just yearly cost of misplaced equipment, IT equipment and a three percent cost increase. And the medical team health has given us a three percent increase. And then we have medical invoicing that we estimate, we're looking at eighty-four thousand. And then just a three percent cost increase over our con expenses and other expenses.
Going to Motorola cameras.
That would be under your contract service, but we have that.
Does that say Motorola in the jail queue?
So Axon, that would replace that Axon.
Okay.
And that's under the contract, that's where it was going up to the forty-eight thousand, that was where it's gonna have that ninety-seven thousand dollar increase.
Actually, I looked up.
But of course, that would be under the contract, so that would be the one where that would change possibly if we get into going through Motorola.
Okay.
And that's one thing, and the grant that TJ were doing does not cover credit.
And we are using the county's grants, uh, writers to help us navigate the the pitfalls of of production on those grants.
So we should get top-quality products and and be judged fairly for our needs and usage.
Under civil, which is again a five percent increase, that was a possibility. We're looking at forty thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-one cents and then under our expenses, seven hundred and twenty-nine, and that's just that fluctuation from the central square that we have and then cost increases. So our total budget went to sixteen thousand, sixteen million five hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-one thirty-two, which was a one point on eighty-eight hundred ninety-one dollar increase for the whole budget. Just to do that, it's usually under the salary.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
It's been a pleasure working with you and the whole the whole sheriff's department, so. Try to say that we're associated.
It's it's again, been a pleasure.
Probably for a while.
Okay, I know that, I got that.
Hey, you don't have to suck up to him before the budget come down.
Well, I'm I'm kinda letting David know we got an opportunity to fill it, so.
Well, I, it's a, it's a good presentation, glad George has.
I'm glad George has.
Uh, you know, George, it's like coaching football, you're as good as your people that you have working.
Yeah, and and our our budget, we know the highs, we know it's always a gap to mention what it's gonna cost us, but again, we try to be frugal in what we spend and give back to what we don't use, but you know, there is some things that we wait till the end of your purse, that's why you'll see some things, but we we do that again, I wanna reiterate, we do that because if an emergency comes up, we want those dollars available where we need them if in case of emergency, so we don't have to come to you and say, hey, we need extra money for this and that, because we know that, you know, other divisions do that too and we don't wanna be a burden.
George, if we lived in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to worry about this.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to come visit you every weekend on a daily basis, uh
We can't stand that.
I would tell you this, I don't care if Paul's in charge of the food or not, I'm not coming. I have no desire, I wouldn't, you know, I don't know how people live that, I really don't. You get to walk out of there every day, go home, they don't.
Yeah.
And in my mind, if I ever did send anything wrong, but I would be in there, I would not be a return repeater and I think just like in education, the kids that cause trouble in school are the same kids that causing trouble every
It's way like.
It's cyclical.
Way of life.
That's too bad. I don't want anybody running around through your garage or my garage trying to find something, to take someplace to sell so they can get money to do something, which they shouldn't be doing, so. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
He typed it in, you too, sir.
I I have one question, if I could, just looking through the roster of spots and uh it it looks like if I'm reading this right, we're only four spots shy of people fully staffed. Close.
Yeah.
Very close.
And and we just, we just had some people go to school, so we can't show them
Right.
on the roster until they complete that school, which this weekend, they just got their state test.
So you just actually, I believe we've got, we've got one that's leaving, so we're still on that three that over range and we have Apple.
I said, then you have two to go to the school?
Yeah, we we had three just complete the school.
And another, it's gotta pass.
George, every year, if I'm, correct me, if I'm right, the past eight years, it's usually been four open decisions.
Yeah.
Oh, always, I mean, when you have a hundred and twenty employees, it's gonna happen, you're not gonna have full staff all the time, you know? You go to restaurants, they don't have full staff, you know, and I can tell you, when you have a spatially and and a degree associated with that, such as Ocada, you know, it takes time to fill those positions, wouldn't happen, that's why when we sat down a couple of years ago and looked and and the commissioner was gracious enough to, out of a a non-barring unit here, to open that up and and help us, we we increased those spots, but also in the budget to say, we can we can send two people from correction to school if if they test and they're worthy to go to school, that's helped us tremendously to fill the vacancies, to protect this community, which means, you know, a great thing that's because our job is to protect the community and you guys has made that happen. We want you to know, we appreciate that.
Appreciate it, I mean, why is where we need to be there?
Right now, yes, I think we are, I mean, but I've been sending him all the wage offers, you guys say you'll like it, he he everybody's, everybody's putting money into getting people to come to their agencies.
It's very competitive.
It's a very competitive marketplace right now, one, because of all these special entrepreneurs that want to defund the police and and people walked out retired at a outrageous rate, you know, in the big city. How the big cities are trying to give throw money at them to get them back and guess what, they're not coming in because they don't wanna do this.
I'm seeing stuff, other counties, other jurisdictions seem to be where we were about a year, year and a half ago.
They are. Yeah. Fort Pike and Jackson, they're suffering all the time and Ben and they're trying to raise it, they can't, they don't have the money to offset that. And we're we're, Pickaway County is now offsetting what Franklin County's doing and we're behind in, you know? After we had our meeting with commissioners and they raised this five dollars out of Vernon Stanford, went to his commissioner.
He got six.
And hey, says, I'll be right back, he went there, fifteen minutes later, he came back and gave him a six-dollar increase itself in more because he said, we are not losing people in all states.
It's like a lottery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like you said, it's competitive and we're just trying, you know, my duty is to protect citizens of this community, I'm gonna do whatever it takes to do that.
Well, and as we sit here, we have passed eleven thousand calls for services this year, so we'll have two months to get. So the need for the field is there, yeah. Jail is plenty more than it was built for thirty years ago, so obviously, there's a need there. Unfortunately, we don't live in a perfect world, yeah. I would love to go home and never have to come back again, know that everything's safe and secure.
And we're handling a lot more gun calls, we're seeing, we're seeing rides in in gun calls tremendously across the board and we're putting our people in harm's way every day and you know what, they're standing strong and I'm proud of them, I am proud of who we got, where we're
And the work they do.
And we are, we are really emphasizing on training and I think it's made dividends of the quality of officer we're putting on the streets to go out and handle those kinds of situations. You know, you can't have a rookie going in on a gun call and expect good things to happen, it can't be that way, so.
TJ, I do wanna say this, when I was a boy, we never locked our doors.
No, I didn't.
The fifties and sixties, when we're going out, you never thought about, you took your guns to school on a, on a raft on the back of your truck and looked down at the shot class.
Absolutely.
We live in, it's a, I don't know why we metamorphosized what we did.
It is different, or Absolutely, I grew up in the East End, you know, it's supposed to be the reverend.
Yeah.
We'd lock our doors. You know, my shotgun sat in the, you know, in the window of my Chevy truck.
Correct.
You know, I went to Flagee and and it sat out there and then we'd go squirrel hunting in the evenings.
But you never thought about doing something nefarious with it?
No, that that didn't, that didn't come though, we, you know, occasionally try and drink a little beer.
I'm just trying to think what it'll be like six years from now, I'm glad I won't be here.
Yeah, I'm sure I won't either. To to that point, it, I mean, if we're talking about a hundred and twenty slots to fill and we feel good about where we are in relation to that right now, is the next step in the discussion, hey, maybe a hundred and thirty slots is a more appropriate figure for this community?
Paul, Paul right now, every day, has won five, five extra years, I mean, because of because of the post, because of of the way now our jail, you know? If we had a new built jail, we could actually have less post people assigned, you know? But with the jail we got and the way it was set up, what people didn't think about back then, you know, you're using more post assignments than you would on on a new convention jail and and Brad can tell you that. Because you, by your adult attention, you have to have personnel posts and we can always use five more people up to, absolutely, because you know, we still have officers going on domestic calls and gun calls where their backup's fifteen to twenty to thirty minutes away because of the the
Customs.
How how big the county is and and yes, that that can be very, you know, it has been proven time and time again that an officer going gets killed, the next one or two officers in that scene will be killed also, you know? Because they they didn't have the initial backup going in, so yes, it's very important that we have the personnel to do the job.
Seems like that's maybe the next phase of the five or ten-year outlook.
Yeah.
Conversation.
We have to look at that. We have to look.
Well, we appreciate you taking care of the citizens across county.
I I thank you and and you know, my hat goes off to my staff, you know? One person, Cameron Sheriff, she has to have the people behind him with the knowledge and the help to do that. And I think that he can tell you from coming up in the police department, you know, it's a team effort, it's not one person sitting there making making all these decisions. It it's a team effort and it's always gotta be a team effort. And it's like Kristen and how you with the budget, you know? It takes it off me, these girls do wonders and and you know, the 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 team does great, the team does great, you know, I'm glad to have Paul in there, Paul doing wonders in the jail, but it's an everyday fight, you know, these people in jail are so broken because of the drug industry. They are so broke and health-wise that in mental health, we are still housing and and we'll have a meeting tomorrow, you know, on on the mental health with with Judge, we charge that strategy. But we're housing mental health and we shouldn't be. You know, we shouldn't be, that's where your suicides come from, that's where the 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 sheriffs get a bad name because guess what, there's a lot of people in jail that think about suicide every day and Paul can tell you, our downstairs full of people that just, some people is using it just as a crutch so they can be down there and see what's going on, but other people are definitely suicidal and we have to watch them around the corner.
George, Sheriff?
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate you gentlemen's attention, thank you guys for being here. Know what is coming into it, how you doing through?
All right.
Yes, I can see.
Yeah, you can see. Paul, two groups for twenty-two.
For the holiday.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure, I was gonna, I had yesterday blocked for uh
Why?
For the meetings and then Jack.
The meeting go yesterday.
Thank you.
Just no shape, no shape, no number.
No shape, no number.
Mr. Murray?
No, I am.
Gentlemen, you're here to discuss uh property rights in Ohio.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Whatever you want.
Well, we've got a little bit into your time and I apologize for that.
No, that's all right.
There's a lot of stuff going on right now.
I like to be short-winded by Bob might disagree. Well, gentlemen, uh, just wanted to thank you for taking a couple of moments of your time, I know that you guys are very busy this time of year. Uh, just wanted to introduce our organization, uh, we represent an organization called Property Rights Ohio. We were founded a couple of years ago by a gentleman out in Lincoln County named Keith Wilson. He was trying to develop his land for energy system, a solar energy system and uh his neighbors didn't take too kindly to that. And so we, our organization works to give landowners around the state a network of support where often there's not any. And so we just wanted to ask a couple of questions about some of your experiences here in Ross County. Uh, I do wanna say we're based out of Columbus, so it's good to be in the real capital of Ohio, but um
Very good, I appreciate it.
I don't like the big city, I'm more of a small town.
I I I'm with you.
Yeah, um, so we just wanted to ask a couple of questions and kind of gauge your thoughts, uh, we do this with county commissions all over the state. So have there been, I assume there have been energy projects?
We've had three. We've had one on uh one fifty-nine, uh forty-nine point five kilowatts. Then we have the two hundred and seventy-four on one oh four project, yellow bud project. Right now, they have finished up the Buckskin project.
Correct.
Which is on uh state route for you now.
And those are, those are all solar, correct?
Those are solar.
Have you had any natural gas fracking, anything regarding coal?
No.
Okay, um, the reason I ask is because oftentimes it's a different scenario between different energies uh production facilities on how it's done. production facilities on how it's done. So I imagine y'all have dealt with the Ohio Power Siding Board?
Yes.
I'm sure you've dealt a little bit too much, but the Ohio Power Siding Board.
You know, I think they're understanding. Uh, they received a lot of phone calls during the projects. Uh, people named this struggle because of uh, again, a house called 52 didn't have then give people the right or give us the right to say, we think there's industrial growth that can take place here. Maybe this is not the best place.
Well, that that leads me into my next question. Um, when, and I'm sure the board haven't taken official position for those Ohio Power Siding Board projects, correct? Um, when you, when y'all were making those decisions, did landowner property rights come into play? Was that a factor in your decision? And were you supportive, neutral, or?
What we usually do is when something is taking place in a township, the township trustees approve a project along with the school district that is in the in the uh project area, those everyone receive funding from that too. And if both those parties say, yes, we think it's a great thing to do, we're not going to dispute that. Unless it's in an economic growth area where we we think that would be better for our community than to have.
Like if it was in downtown Chillicothe, it would, there'd be a different story.
Or if it was one of those needs going out of Chillicothe.
Okay.
Uh, that uh growth was already started and we would want continuation of the growth in that direction.
Okay.
But once solar farm, I will tell you this, for 30 years, the landowners have waited for something else over to happen and they were happy. We have their little national natural brat gas and we have a little capacity. It's it's not out there. Most companies want that. That's one. So for Dallas and Pickaway County.
Right.
So uh at that point, it was their land. This is before Houseville of 52, they made a decision. The the township agreed with it, the school district agreed with it, and we said, that's fine.
Okay. So some of, just for a little bit of background, the reason we feel this work is so important, some of the landowners across the state, namely uh up in Union County, uh our good friend down in Lincoln County, all the way up to like Mahoning County in the Northwest Ohio, some of the families have received dozens of incredible death threats over this type of thing. It's like Hatfields and McCoys. And so what we try to do is we try to educate folks and say, well, look, this is a constitutional right. This is about a family making a decision that's right for them. And it's about, you know, there's a possibility for communities to benefit. Did y'all see any type of opposition on that scale here in Ross County or?
Yes.
How bad? Like, did the sheriff, did the deputies have to get called?
No, no.
Okay.
They were just conversations between myself and some there to the site that wasn't happy with what was taking place. You know, the people, this is rural Ohio, people value their property and value what they can and cannot do. And then having somebody, your neighbor come in and say, give them a death threat because you want to do something. It's not the environment. I don't think anyone wants to.
Correct. At least we hope that's correct. So as elected officials, um, we've seen all over the state, some county commissioners remain quite firm on their belief in private property rights. Um, others, not so much.
There is a county I know that has limited the uh the the amount of waters that they can put in, which will be like two to three solar pounds in itself.
Well, there's, I mean, I think there's well over 30 counties in across the state that have had some sort of exclusion or outright ban for particularly solar and wind. Um, we've we've attended a lot of those hearings. It gets quite divisive. Uh, a lot of times county commissioners say, well, look, I understand about property rights, but the key word, of course, is but. What was the decision making process? Cause I'm, have y'all had anybody request bans in the county or at least in the township or so? Consider yourselves lucky because it's, I I can assume it's quite a difficult decision to make as an elected official.
I have had a couple of people ask me, are there going to be any more solar farms? And I told them not during my term.
Okay.
And it consists 31st of this month, next month. You know, they're there. Again, there. If it is, the Buckskin is probably, uh, and I know there are people who live out there and love the the lay of the land and they see this as an infringement. Now, I go look at this every day. But that was probably the best location for a solar farm because it was out in the country. 104, people travel 104 instead of 23 to get to Columbus. I don't know if you probably came down 23. But then another route is 104 that you can drive, probably make it in about 40, 54 minutes back to Columbus. Uh, some of the property owners out there have had a lot of comment by what the people in the community have said to them about what they have done. But I think that has died down now since they put the fence up, they've got trees up, they're trying to uh camouflage the 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 unit itself, which comes comes with time. We did have a group that wanted to put goats to graze, keep the grass down. I said, goats will get on top of your solar farms. If you don't do anything but sheep there. So I think there's ones talking about putting sheep in an area, just keeping grazing down. The the 104 project is so big that it has to be divided into sections when they come to mowing. You took the mow, the mow section A one day and it goes all the way through Z, but uh and then people will complain about the grass is too high under the. A lot of people are looking for reasons to be upset and that's why.
Don't we know? Um, I guess I I guess I would only ask a couple more questions. Um, it seems like y'all have had a very effective system with at least energy systems and balancing, you know, the constituent complaints as well as the property rights issue. And I I commend y'all. Y'all have done a better job than a lot of county commissioners across this state. Is there anything that you would say to a county commissioner elsewhere who is dealing with something very similar to what y'all have dealt with?
No. I I say that because every county is going to be different. The 104 project initially had Pickaway County in the project with us. They looked at the finances of it and said, it's not feasible for us to do. So I, at that point, they said, no. So it doesn't upset me, but Pickaway County had to make that decision. And I think we kind of has uh quite a few solar farms. I see the one in Atlanta, is a pretty nice sized one. I know Fayette County, I don't know how, but that's supposed to be the largest, one of the largest solar farms in the state of Ohio. But uh I think that may even go to court.
It seems like a lot of, a lot of the solar projects around the state end up going to the Supreme Court. Uh, I think there's one out in Madison County, that really big one is.
I'm sorry, Madison is.
Yes, Oklahoma, I think is what it's called. Um, it's probably going to go to the Supreme Court. But uh, you know, we're just trying to build a movement here of landowners. They they feel like their families are in danger and it's it's not right. They're making the right decision for themselves, for their families. A lot of these guys are 80 plus year old farmers. They've worked the land their whole lives. At what point do we as a government tell them, oh, you have to keep working?
Well, that was the one on 100, on 159. Their comment was the people who sold the land for the solar farm was they were leaving a legacy, leaving it for their their children in the ranch because this is a process, you know, let's say that you're going to receive X amount of dollars for 30 years. Uh, it's more money than what they're making by farming. On the 104 project, I think uh there were areas that where they took off topsoil that was only about an inch, inch and a half of topsoil. And then you get down to sand. So uh you don't want to put so much potassium and lime and other chemicals on the ground and make it fertile for the for the crops to grow.
Right. And it's, it's the same as, you know, leasing your land or your surface rights for for fracking.
We did it for, I did on our farm for Quay State.
Right.
They came in and they said, hey, we're going to pay you a lease. Then one day they brought in a thumper and then we didn't, we didn't have the lease anymore because we didn't have enough cash on the property. So.
But it was a lease. And so it's, you still get to retain the ownership of your land so that the next generation or the generation after is able to have something. And uh we feel that it's, one, a constitutional right to be able to do these things. But two, it's, it's important for the, for the next generations, the young folks, because it's, it's getting harder and harder. Um, I don't think, do we have any other questions? If you guys have any questions for us, we're more than happy to answer them. We've been to just about every county in this state. We we go everywhere.
Well, no, no question, but I think maybe a comment. I mean, I think we've taken a mature approach to this. Well, we've tried three solar farms across all of the county, including a lot of different demographic. We're top part of the kind of variants that Ross County has. But now we're in a pause stage to see if promises, you know, given we're probably, we're going to be Francis Scott, little landowner to the solar farm to the county. Um, so we'll, we'll see how well this works. And then decide on an individual property right type of basis, who wants to continue and grow going forward.
I think you're right. That is a far more mature approach than than a lot of areas I've I've taken.
Now, come next year, it's supposed to be the first payments on the solar farm. And that'll be an indication of what they showed us we would be receiving in relationship to what we get. But they have reached out to uh foundation groups, give them money to foundation groups.
Like philanthropy and stuff? Okay.
And uh the library, the libraries are receiving money. So there's a breakdown of vocational school. That school districts within those districts are going to be receiving funds.
Very nice stuff.
I think that's, you guys have been all over the state, right?
Yeah.
Have any of these agreements not worked out the way they were supposed to for any of those communities? I mean, these are still pretty new for Ross County.
Right. They're, they're pretty new across the state.
Yeah.
Some of the older, more legacy types of installments. Uh, I know up in Northwest Ohio, we've got a colleague in Paulding County. He was a commissioner up there. You guys know Tony.
You've been here.
You know Tony Zartman? Quite a character, isn't he? He um.
The wind farms up there.
Yeah, he was the commissioner when all the wind farms went up and it fundamentally changed this community for the better. Schools, you know, you're looking at double, double the funding. Kids are able to go to college. Fire departments paid for those kinds of things. And it's, it's little things like that that make a very big improvement. And it's all because someone stood up and protected a landowner's right to do what they want on their land. We think that's a beautiful thing.
So you're not aware of any of these deals crapping out or not living up to the expectations or anything like that?
Not to my knowledge. I think there's a lot of legal, legal checks and bounds that they have to follow.
No, I think there's, there's, the unanswered question so far is the economic impact. I think the runoff, green water runoff, the chemical erosion of the the solar panels and what that does to the soil in terms of reverting back to farm.
Right. And that's, that's something that we hear often. Frankly, I'm not a soil or topography expert, so I don't know if I could ever answer that. Yeah, we'll see. I don't think there have been any projects that have been around long enough just yet to really evaluate.
I was going to say, there's nothing, that's what we have here. There's, we'd have, we can't go and look to find out if this happened or not.
Right.
It's, it's a long term question.
Right.
They have a lease for 20, 25 years, something like that. I'm not going to be here to find out if they done something wrong or the, or the, they pulled the panels out of the ground and go from there and take it back to find land.
Don't say that here.
Well, I think.
I'll be a hundred.
Probably in the next five years.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure they'll be, the EPA will be doing evaluations. Is there any runoff? Now, my presentations that I've received from three different companies is that's not the case. My, my answer, my question was just, how do you know? And then they give me an answer that I can't understand. So apparently they're right and I'm wrong.
And how, how will technology evolve? Better panels, replacements? We don't, we don't know.
I think, I think it'll be interesting in the next four years to see how well domestic manufacturing improves, not just for solar, but also for any energy system, whether you're looking at battery storage or you're looking at the wind turbines or you're looking at new stuff like nuclear. I think, I think it'll be interesting to see if policies come into play that incentivize domestic production. Because we've already got it up in uh just outside of Toledo, the first solar manufacturing plant. They make tons of panels. There's one up in Petasko as well.
Where do the parts come from?
The parts? I want to say they're, oh, mostly domestically produced.
Oh.
I I I hope so too. But um it would be interesting to see.
To your point, I've had a lot of people approach me who are farmers who would like to do a solar farm. Because their property now is part, portions of are in crap. That's to break, you know, stop the runoff of fertilizers and pesticides getting the strings and then falling down. And I said, I, I, I said, the most important thing for you, if you want to be involved in a project like this is you have to be close to transmission lines.
Yeah.
If you're not close there, they're not even going to consider doing the project. Because they need the transmission lines to transmit air, to get the energy out of where they need it to go. So. But there are people who would like to see, they're probably in the results. So. Is it beans? Is it corn? Is it solar panels? That's basically what what it comes down to. I farmed all my life. I grew up in beans and corn, but I'm not going to stop the solar panels if somebody don't. Probably wants to install them close to a transmission line to generate a lot of money for them and their children. So.
It's a much more mature approach than we've heard across the state. So thank you for that.
A little bit older.
A little bit older, a little bit wiser?
I don't know about that, but I know we're over.
Well, gentlemen, I don't think we'll take up any more of your time, but I want to extend my appreciation for y'all having us come in and have a good conversation.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Randy.
Thank you.
Much, man.
One more thing. Do you ever have any questions? Take my card somewhere in my pocket. I have too much stuff.
I can't move. Made it all day. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yeah.
Take a nice meal.
Thanks, John.
Glad to meet you.
David, how are you?
Living the dream.
Right, he's not able to attend today.
Well, Aaron, then you get to say. Well, Aaron, David, this is pertaining to the Camp Sherman and Copper Park.
It is, and I know, I'm sure you're probably going to say.
I like your beard.
That too.
I gotta look at him twice and think, okay.
You've got to get ready for Christmas, so I'm part of the.
We're preparing. I like it.
So I know you're probably going to say due to the formation of the Ross County Park District that this is going to be on them and and not on you. But my problem with that being said is Ross County has held title to Camp Sherman Park in Frenchtown. For next month will be 52 years. There was an application called Program Reutilization and Plan submitted by Ross County on the 8th day of September in 1971. And what it is, is same thing with the FLPP now, Federal Lands Procurement Program. Is a way to get federal lands to the county and it has to have specific things that you have to follow. In this case, it's about an eight page deed. You guys got it downstairs. I got it for you guys there about a week and a half ago. So it states and references that 1971 application of things that you have to follow in order to maintain those lands or it refers back to federal government. Now, whether it referred back, it's not what the deed showing, kind of a little bit of the talk I got maybe. I don't know. I don't know why we started all over because the deed clearly states all you need to do to transfer, which I think is what you guys are trying to do is transfer the deed to Ross County Parks. It says you have to have written permission from the department here. So why we went all the way back to get a whole new deed, I don't know, but.
David, let, let me say something real quick.
Okay.
Back in 2000, when Union started schools were going through the building project. The land between the, where the junior high is now, the middle school, to Cincinnati Boulevard. And the land from the elementary to the, to the barns.
Yeah.
Going up to Sandusky.
Towards 101, 104.
I checked when Gary Moore was on the board at that time. I checked to find out how do we recur that property so we can have a buffer zone between the school and the prison.
Sure.
Have a great relationship. Had a, we had a great relationship. I had a great relationship with the prisons when I was there. We had to get the state to come in and say, this is, this estate property belongs to the feds and it has to go back to the feds, tell the feds, come back to the state before we can purchase the property. Took us about nine months to complete that process. The realtors for the federal government had to come down and they made a decision and then they gave us a price of what we had to pay. The realtors for the federal government had to come down and they made a decision, and then they gave us a price of what we had to pay to purchase that. Aaron hasn't been here this long, but I think we started this process maybe four years ago. Trying, trying to, to put that into their venue to take care of. And I think there was an agreement at that time that that was what wanted to happen, we wanted to see that happen. And it seems like now it's just running a wet cement.
Well, we're not, because they gave me the number of who the FLPP director that has it in Boston, Massachusetts. And I called him, I called his boss, and I called their boss in DC and about thirty-four other people in the Department of Interior. And I got an email back from that individual. Promised me that, hey, he's getting on it and we'll have it. Well, then I go back and talk to Parks and they said, well, we've heard that before. So I sent it back with a long email stating, I'm not associated with the parks. I'm working with them because I'm a veteran, I'm, I'm concerned about Camp Sherman Park. So I explained that when you do something, and you guys well know, when you set out things, you get requests on what things cost, and then it takes another year or two to get something to where you can act on it, then all those are have to be all redone, so you're just wasting money. And I explained all this in an email. So in six days after I receive the guy's name and phone number, I got an email back and I gave it to the Parks Department and he assures us that we'll have it by Friday, both titles to not only Camp Sherman Park, but also Ross County Park up there in Eastern Park. So, you're getting the title Friday. So that's-
Thank you.
Yeah, that's no problem. I know how to talk to people, so I know, I know how to, yeah, you guys know I go with that. So Department of, Department of Interior knows me now, so. And the federal government, because of, uh, the national park we have out here, you walk into there and say, Camp Sherman, that's an angry place. So I, I actually made a formal complaint to one of the people there that runs that and got a talked to the Department of Interior and got a call back with the guy that runs it, that's a whole nother story. But anyway, what we're getting here, you guys will have it, they'll have it. I was told, that's them, they have commissioners and all that, but you guys do have a portion of funding that goes to them. So they may be separate, but they're still there if you guys pay anything. If you guys give them a hundred dollars, it's still Ross County. So, my issue is, here we are, cause I, I had to go through and research all stuff. I always wondered, you know, why, you know, you know, I went to, you know, I lived there. I brought up kids, I tried to find places to take kids. I don't know when those swings and stuff was put up, probably nineteen seventy-two, cause they look about that time. I was gonna bring pictures and stuff, I brought you guys copies of all this stuff before, I don't really think it matters. But everything out there is nineteen seventy-two, so I know you guys can say now, well, it's on the parks. And the parks say, well, we don't have a title. But you guys have had a title for next month will be fifty-two years. So the bathrooms don't work. The land, and I will give it to Ross County, the mowing is spectacular. It is, is probably the best I see anywhere. I don't like the fact that they made a four-wheeler track, uh, along the little drainage area between the houses and running up through there and just tearing the shit out of it, because I take my dog there and I actually use Camp Sherman Park, cause I'm a veteran. I like going to that, cause it kinda supports it.
Those are the people in Frenchtown, don't they?
I don't know, I, you can see kind of a, uh, cause I tried to look to see where they came from. You can kinda see a path that goes to that house there with the little picnic table and the, and the trampoline out back, but-
David, with the, uh, I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying, with, with, we have applied for fifty thousand dollars for Camp Sherman Park. And that money will be coming whenever we can have, have a settlement saying that that's your property, our property at that time. But the, the, the park's property.
Right.
And to, to do a, we were holding, we were talking about like a fencing, some type of fencing to divide Camp Sherman Park from, uh, from the houses in Frenchtown.
I heard that too. But I also heard that the main concern is gonna be for park-type stuff, whether it be walking trails, biking trails, stuff like that, before there even any consideration of anything concerning Camp Sherman. So here's my thing. This also says when that title is transferred, it has to follow along the same lines of that nineteen seventy-one agreement. I'm still, I haven't got that yet. I, I would like it if you guys can help me get a copy of that, but what I've been told, and I don't like saying I'm hearsay, but so far a lot of that hearsay has been true. But even if it's not, I think this needs to be a, a high consideration. This is Camp Sherman Park, this was part of Camp Sherman. I know growing up, and I bet you ninety percent of people in this town don't even know what Camp Sherman is.
There are a lot of people in this town that didn't know what Mount City was.
Well, that's true.
I mean, it's, 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 it's a force for the trees.
But the, but Mount City is a whole different world. What I'm saying is-
I'm just trying to make a comparison more often, what people know and don't know.
Right. But everybody needs to be represented, and I think for whatever reason, the veterans are left out in a lot of stuff. In the county and the city. So, here we got something that I know a lot of people think is an eyesore, but that is the first thing a lot of people see coming into Chillicothe. Now, and I know this is Ross County, but Chillicothe is a county seat. So you guys know as well as I do, if you try to sell a car and it looks very poorly maintained, you're not gonna get anything for it. You put a nice paint job on it, you show records that you've maintained it, it's got a nice tire, then you're gonna sell that car. It's the same thing about people coming into this town. If you, that's what you see coming in. And along with some of this stuff as you get in, but they're, they're working on that. You know, Chillicothe's starting to clean up their act once you get into city limits. But that park is not only Ross County, it's owned by the county for fifty-two years. I think we really need to consider some veteran influence in on that instead of just another bike trail, couple swing sets and, and this and that. I think it needs to be modeled into what I'm pretty sure our agreement in nineteen seventy-one with the application of the federal government was, and to honor Camp Sherman in some way in this park. Which would, in my opinion, fall upon you guys and not the park system. If you wanna transfer the title then, when that's where it's going, that's fine, but-
What, what, what exactly do you want, David? I mean, I mean-
You wanna know what I really want? I want the-
What do you really want?
The two columns in front of the, the CCI Warden's House that are original to Camp Sherman that they painted white so it can look like little things for their little warden house, needs to be the entrance to Camp Sherman. I'd like to see a military theme type, not so much playground stuff, but how nice would it be to have a walking path around it? And then every so often, just like they did down the Optandie Park, where you go around the backside of it, but like a little plaque every so often, and maybe the direction it's pointing, they show a picture of what used to be there in Camp Sherman. A little information on Camp Sherman. Then you keep walking, then there's another one. And that way you're honoring the veterans, you're honoring Camp Sherman, you're honoring our past, you're honoring Chillicothe, and you're teaching people, cause just like you said, people don't know. So you bring up Mount City, you make it to where people wanna go there, and they learn about it. That's the whole point of why we're doing, everything we're doing with all this new, I don't even know what it's called, with, with everything, buzzer groups, all this stuff, they're putting up all them green, yellow sign stuff. That's, that's all great. But we're left out, and Camp Sherman was a huge, huge, and there, nineteen eighteen, nineteen twenty, we, we brought sixty thousand people in because of Camp Sherman to the population in Chillicothe.
Only one of three training bases.
Eleven hundred people died. You know, we, we, this is, in my opinion, and I'm, I am biased, but I'm a veteran, in my opinion, you would get more people into Ross County if you had a Camp Sherman something than you will, and, and I'm downplaying them, the national park. But how cool would it be, and you know, as a school teacher, to, when you bring the kids in, you bring them in out there, you walk around, you learn about that, you learn all that, and then you come down and you pull into Camp Sherman Park and you bring all those kids off those buses, they walk around there and they learn about Camp Sherman and what it made and the influences it had on Chillicothe. I think that would quadruple the tourism compared to what we are doing now. That's my opinion.
Well, David, your opinion's a plan that we haven't had. Moving, moving the pillars from the superintendent's area out there, but taking an, an act of God.
No, well, I already talked to a deputy warden.
What about the ones here in town where the entry point to Camp Sherman was?
Well, that's, that's my question, cause somebody told me that those aren't original, they were placed there left. I was told they were original and that was actually one of the gates, but then I was told-
My dad said that's where-
That's what I think, so I think we need to protect those, and that's the next thing, is I wanna go talk to the mayor, but cause I don't know if those are just sitting on them people's property lines, if they're allowed to move them, if they, I know that one person to the, that you're going farther away into the city, um, is planting stuff around, which is fine. But who says that maybe they go out and damage one or something and say, well, it's my yard? I don't know, I'll, I'll look that up, but I, that's not, that's in the city. Now, I wanted to come to you guys for the county. I, I talked to the deputy warden Friday, a week ago, last Friday. She said she would talk to the warden and then call me back on Monday, and then of course, my guess is because I'm, I'm nobody. I just called and said, hey, I'm trying to help out and put some-
Deputy warden at CCI?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, cause CCI was there before RCI.
Is she a, you know the girl?
I don't know, it was a female. The deputy warden.
What was her name, do you remember?
I got it wrote down.
Was it Edwin? Hamilton?
I can't remember. I just called the number and she was the one that answered, and she said she was a deputy warden, the warden was out. But she'll talk to him Monday and give me a call back or have him call. And like I said, that was a week ago today, so I don't want to keep, I don't wanna overstep my bounds. That was just something I did on my own, because they're doing so much stuff out there. You know there's only one building left, the old library that was original. Somebody said there was some wind damage to the roof on this last storm, so if we don't work on saving that, and that is where I got into the argument out there, the national park, and the lady came out around the office and just literally, I, I thought it was horribly disrespectful, and so that's why I made the complaint, and I told them to review their security footage, and then they're supposed to be getting back with me, but. Anyway, that is a lot of, I noticed down here in this building, especially on the two lower floors, that is probably the only place I've went in this entire county and mentioned Camp Sherman, and they were happy to talk about it. Everybody else, you say Camp Sherman, and it's almost like they get mad at you. Like they don't want you to say anything about Camp Sherman, so that's why I came here, and that's why I didn't wanna come here and overstep and get into the parks, that's not what I'm here for. The parks can do whatever they want with it, that's fine. I don't like the fact that we were not taken in the military consideration of it, cause I think that's part of the contract you guys did in seventy-one.
David, I, I, I'm a little upset, in fact, the people, uh, everybody I've talked to about Camp Sherman, love Camp Sherman. About here, two or three years ago, we had the Camp Sherman Days, hundred years that they've been here. Well, it's been more than that.
Yeah.
But it just seems like yesterday we did that. That was a big thing. The armory was out, the armory for Camp Sherman Days, they brought in military equipment. I asked artifacts from Camp Sherman, which I have a couple. Uh, I have the, I have the banner flag, I got a uniform, a picture. These are mine, but I've got them in my house and my office.
And see, I don't wanna ever have to go-
No, no, it's just, it's just, it's truly our history, so anytime I sit as a superintendent of schools, how lucky I was to be able to turn around in my chair and see the Great Seal of Ohio, to know that this school was built on Camp Sherman property, to know that I could turn and look up on the hill and see Worthington, the history that's right here in Mount, in Mount City's right below the, uh, the Great Seal, all the things that we have here that are precious to us. And the VA Hospital, which was built just shortly after, around the thirties, for the, for the, for the military. So, everybody I've ever talked to is, has talked to, oh, they said that's the, the Spanish Flu happened when Camp Sherman was here.
That's where we lost eleven hundred.
We talked about the Majestic Theater, the alley that ran, and blood, blood alley, uh, so, uh-
Yeah, Majestic Theater was-
Most of the people who are currently arguing with you about Camp Sherman have no idea what Camp Sherman is.
That's why I think that it's because we're not letting them know. I guarantee you, and it's no different than what happened here in the country lately, is I almost guarantee you the people you're talking to are upper-middle class or higher. Because if you talk to the regular people, they don't have time for it, they don't care. I mean, I, I can give you names, but I don't think that's where we need to be or, or, or talk about. Because I think what we need to do is quit whining about stuff and say, what can we do? What can we do to show our support for Camp Sherman that doesn't cost anymore? If we're going to do bike paths, if we're gonna do walking trails, if we're gonna do some, why can't we make it towards that, leaning towards that military side or something to do with the military? As we're doing it, it costs the same, you know, or how much it costs to put a little plaque up with a picture on it. I'm sure you get that paid for by the military organizations, so if you can, I'll get it paid for.
David, I, I think everything that you've said is spot on. Brad will tell you that we take great pride in the monument out there. We've had the monument fixed a few times where there was, uh, needed a little bit of pointing on the bricks and cleaning on the front. We put a new roof on the pavilion.
Oh, I love the pavilion.
Yeah. We used to go out there all the time, uh, the county would have, we'd have cookouts-
Right.
There at that, at that place.
But when's the last time you've been there?
It's, I've been there recently.
Well, I'm talking about in the fish with the past.
Probably three years.
Probably longer than that, but it, here's my-
I don't know about that. I think it, I'd-
You've had it a function out there?
We had a function out there. Brad, am I right about that? We had chicken breasts and, and to do our employee banquet out there. Employee banquets.
Well, here, and I, I did say-
That was before we fixed the roof, though.
Yeah. Well, my thing is, and I know-
I was gonna say, David, if, if you put together a plan, what you think, I think that would be great. I mean, it's not your responsibility to do, but you being military, you're not being military.
Yeah.
You would know better. A- as you know, my, my, my son-in-law's a colonel of the Marines, uh, my brother was in the Army. My mom was in the Navy, my brother, my uncles were in the Navy. Uh, so, you know, I fly the flag out front with pride because of that, what they did for us. So if you can put a plan together-
Absolutely.
And bring that to us, that's something we can work on.
Cause that's the thing, like when I was talking to the warden, deputy warden, I can't do, you know, I can't say, well, I'm just a person, and then if you can do it, then but if you get behind it, and I know you say, well, you know, it's, it's just like walking in wet cement, well, it's not. Sometimes I think it's, it's how we talk to people and who the people we talk to, and if they don't like it, then we go above their heads to somebody. Everybody has a boss. And that's how I think I got the titles coming as fast as we can, is sometimes you talk to them and they think, well, this is all I can do. No, that's not, cause there's always someone above them. And when that person gets tired of you calling, they're gonna make that person do something.
Well, back in two thousand, when I tried to get that property for the school, I'm still checking the concrete off the shoes.
Well, I can tell you exactly why, and it's because the, I found that deed too. And the deeds clearly stated that a lot of that land was, uh, they call it abandoned, but it wasn't technically a- now, everything around Camp Sherman was bought by the federal government off the individual people. Why these other people was, they weren't even in Ohio that owned actual Camp Sherman. I don't, but federal government purchased that, but a lot of the stuff- was what they said was abandoned land and the federal government just took it. So the deed clearly states that when the federal government abandoned Camp Sherman, it automatically became property of the state. So some of that property was automatically given due to that in nineteen eighteen. That's how they wrote the deed. And then some of that property was purchased, the VA, probably the RCI stuff, uh, was purchased off of individuals and they have the same right up as this. Yes, you can have it. We're giving it to the state and of course, the VA is still federal, but the presidents were going to give it to the state. But if a state ever does anything else with that land, it has to be approved through, through the department tier. So that's why you had to go through there. But I talked to these people. Trump did a good thing when he was in office the first time and moved Bureau of Land Management to Colorado and got them out of DC. You go Colorado, I talked human resources lady over there and she was like, this is explicit. Here is my email. Here is my phone number. I want updates on what you're doing because nothing should take this long. I want to know what is going on. All you gotta do, but I, I don't blame you guys. I don't blame, I don't blame anybody in this industry. You guys don't have time to do what I'm doing. Because there's a thousand other things to do. I took probably four days trying to get numbers be transferred to people and this and that. But if I don't have any bite behind what I'm doing, a lot of people just kind of brush it away, which is probably what the deputy warden and CCI did. But if I say, hey, you know, the county is interested in this and they will do whatever we gotta do. Um, you know, I can put it as far as, because I don't think, in my opinion, she said she was a veteran, um, military veteran. So if that helps you out and, and who it was, assistant war. And I was like, I'll almost bet you the people don't even know what those things are. You know, you know, in two thousand and six, when they did the one oh four thing, they dug up the ones that are in front of the VA entrance now. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. Ross County Parks Program. Uh, were very gracious to print that out and give it to me and, and I have it with me here. But in two thousand and six, when they was doing work down one oh four, they actually uncovered that if you go back into Camp Sherman history, there's a seventeen foot wide brick road going down and through Camp Sherman. Well, they dug through and they found that actual brick road and the brick road was fine. Now, somebody in my opinion should get their butt kicked for digging that thing up and not keeping that because I know as a veteran, if I was in Colorado and I heard that they, Ross County, found and preserved the original road that maybe some of my ancestors that was training in Camp Sherman walked on and I could come here and walk down that brick road. But we just dug it up. Dug it up.
I can tell you, I can tell you some of the water lines are still there from Camp Sherman and they're wooden.
But yeah, but that, nobody cares.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
I did and it was good. We had to freeze and it broke and then I cared.
Now, there is something that you guys can do.
What I, what I think we can do, David, is, uh, and this would, if, if it, when it goes to Miranda and the Parks Service. Except that thousand dollars was dedicated to Camp Sherman. Some of the ideas that you have, the signage and things like that could go toward, there's a little park there in Yontangy on the other side of the lake that you can walk through, which is pretty much the place.
Where they got the brass? Yes.
And kids have gone in there and now try to carve on it. But that, that would be something that maybe, uh, would be.
That's exactly why I'm looking at. Yeah, it's almost like they put it back there intentionally because hardly anybody goes back there. I mean, it took me so years till I even walked back there to find it.
But that, that could be something that could be, and if you can get the pillars to the entrance of Camp Sherman Park where the people can pull on there because Camp Sherman was there and then putting up, uh, monuments toward the people who fought camp or trained at Camp Sherman.
If it's, if they want to battle, we'll battle. I guarantee you I'll, I'll win that, that one. Because there's no way, I'll go to the federal government. Because we can get Department of Interior to just take it. Because it also states in these deeds that if any time the federal government needs any of these lands back, according to the deed, they just come in and take them.
Correct.
So but my biggest thing is, like I said, I'm fifty-eight years old and I'm just now finding this out. You know, those ones on High Street. Uh, it, it probably wasn't four or five years ago when I, when I found out about them. And I'm like, how the hell did I live here my whole life? And just now finding this stuff. It, it's wrong. And, and that's probably the biggest thing next to, people want to say Tecumseh, but that's the biggest thing that has happened in Chillicothe in the history of Chillicothe. And, and it's almost like it's, I, and I, and here's my impression that I got when I was going around the county Ascot is it's almost like they want to, and, and it's just my feeling. They want to downplay it because they don't want to bring up Camp Sherman. And that's, that was the feeling I got. I got the feeling that, no, well. Because everybody's like, I don't know. And I got pushed off. And this is the other thing that makes me mad. I, I got all of this guy's name and I don't remember his name. I got it wrote down, but but he knows everything about Camp Sherman. He's been trying to do all this stuff and all that. I was like, oh, this is great. I'm going to call him. I call him. The dude's like eighty-four years old and I'm telling you it. I don't know, but we'll just leave it at that. But the.
This is initials JD.
Yeah. And, and the problem I got with it is when I was out there arguing with that lady in, at Hopewell National Park, she randomly brought up the fact that she had given him items from Hopewell in relation to Camp Sherman Park that he was supposed to do something with. And now she said, you know, the VA has a lot of stuff too. That they're holding on, waiting for something, somebody to do something. This was told by the VA. I go to shareholder meetings. I'm, I'm a patient. They're just waiting for somebody to do something, but they said nobody will do anything. Well, here's a problem. The older we get, the less the younger people know and the less they care. And then just like you said, you have these things. So when you go, do you think your kids might? But there's a lot of people, I guarantee you, in this county and across the US that has Camp Sherman stuff, but they're like, well, I'm not going to give it to anybody because all they do is stick it in their own basement and then nothing ever happens.
My daughter wants all my stuff from Camp Sherman. She lives in North Carolina. But she lived here and understands.
Sure. But I mean, this guy's got stuff from Hopewell National Park.
Back, uh, I'm not going to belay with the fact. But I've had, I had some groups come to me and ask me, can we use one of your rooms in the old high school? And I, and I said, yes. And there were multitudes of display candidates brought in to the room that I said that they could use. They wanted to use the room up front because then it overlooked, but we had the room right behind. The display cases came in, but for three, four years, nothing else came in. And at that point, when I walked out the door, uh, that room was recurred back for union side of use.
Here's my, my thing with that. And this is from me because I talked to several people that want to donate stuff. But they're afraid because you did that, yes. But when you leave and a new superintendent comes in, they can say, no, get rid of them. And that's their full right. The county, not so much. You guys are elected. So if you guys find a building and my thing would be, I don't know what the plans are for the armory and, and if that's city and not county, then don't worry. I think it needs to be a county thing. That needs to find a space and we start preserving this stuff that we can't let somebody else have like Hopewell did.
In, in the new visitor center, the plans for the new visitor center in the park is to essentially all these things that we have. Governor, Camp Sherman, Mount City, all that's going to be, there'll be sections in there that people can come through. I hope to see that within the next couple of years.
We can do it. We can do it now. Well, I'm sure.
We gotta get it built first.
I guarantee you there's a building somewhere. There's an area big enough somewhere in this county because I did the same thing in Circleville.
The brick house on one oh four was considered for a period of time, but it's, it's so cut up and I think.
You're talking about the honored ones?
Yeah. I think there may be a lot of that at best.
That's what that guy, he keeps one. I, you could build something and that wasn't part of Camp Sherman. So trying to restore that, you could build something cheaper. So my thoughts, i- if it was me and, and you'll get this in Camp Sherman, I think we need to build a representation of something. And to me, Camp Sherman Theater would be awesome. But if we could do almost like a facade of Camp Sherman The- Theater and then do like a barn dominium type thing. So you could build the structure super cheap and then just work on the aesthetics as money you know, gets brought in. But you'll get federal grants when you start mentioning military stuff and trying to do that. So above the park program, if we county run it and not just parks, but a county Camp Sherman Memorial Area Building Complex. Because this needs to be a pretty decent size. We're talking, you know, I, my thoughts are I'm bringing in World War One equipment. Because there, there's areas sitting around where it went, it fell apart. All you gotta do is request it. When I was commander of the American Legion, I could go up there and say, hey, I want a an M one tank. Union Yoda did it. But if you're a veterans organization, but if we're a county doing a Camp Sherman Memorial Park and how big, just like you said, one of three, you don't think we could get equipment? We can get equipment brought in from California. Because people just want a place to put it where it will be preserved and people can see it and we don't forget about history. We're almost lost of all our World War Two bets. We don't have any World War One. So the more we go and the more of our older population we lose, we're going to have, nobody doesn't even know. I mean, there's, I tried talking to that dude on the phone. He said he was going to call me back and meet up and I was like, dude, can I put you on camera and interview you? Because my thoughts are I don't want to lose the information you have. He's like, no, I'm not interested in that. And then I talked about Camp Sherman. He goes, no, we don't need Camp Sherman Park. That place is, is just a bunch of trash. And all he kept talking about was all that land and getting that building that you talked about. I was like, nobody's got that kind of money. But we have.
That was a conversation you were talking to the wrong person.
The county owns Camp Sherman Park and for fifty-two years we've done nothing in relation to Camp Sherman. So my thought is.
You put together, you, you put together a plan and you bring it back.
Okay.
And we'll look at it and monies that we have, we'll look at. Again, if we give it to you to the parks, uh, be part of Miranda, but we, we could, I know initially we suggested some kind of barrier. So when people do come there, it's not unsightly to what's in the back of the, of the park itself. But, but a, a, a structure like what is there on the backside of Yontangy, which could be enjoyed, which you finally found, you put that together. I, I, I feel your, your passion for this. As superintendent, I went out on Beer's Run Road because somebody told me one of the old barracks buildings was out there, which was made of hickory. Right about that. And I went out and tried to purchase that building from him so we could put it down at the land lab as a historic site. And then I went out and the old schoolhouse on the corner of one oh four and, uh, two oh seven.
Oh, yeah. I'd love to have that.
We were going to get that moved, but too many farm equipment pieces have hit that right now and it's not stable to be able to move. I thought that would be a nice thing to put back on the land lab. Not only a portion of Camp Sherman, but a portion of the one-room schoolhouses that unions saw they had.
Right.
But David, I, I, I do, I, I've known you a long time and I know your passion for this. You put together a plan and bring it back to us. That's what, that's what we want.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, can I ask for one thing for you guys?
I don't know.
It's no different, it's no different than if I sell a house. You kind of want it especially, uh, let me take it back. A government that owns a house, a city, state, local, federal, and has an operating, not abandoned, Camp Sherman Park's not abandoned. Um, and you're going to transfer it to Ross County Parks. I think it should be in as good or better con- condition than it was when you got it, when you transferred it. Because like I said, this park wasn't abandoned. It was just neglected. So I think prior to, hopefully Friday, they'll get the, the titles. If not, I'll call the guy again. But prior to that, I think, and I already talked to Ross County Building Department. I think we need to send the building department out there and they need to evaluate the bathrooms. They need to camera the drain lines and everything. So when you guys put that over, that's one thing that they don't have to do. And.
Brad, do we not show this bathroom something?
No, there's actually no.
There's definitely a bathroom out there.
Well, there's a building for a bathroom. There was a building there one time, but.
It's still there.
There's no fixtures in there now.
It could be put in there.
Yeah.
Fifty-two years. I guarantee you it was a bathroom in nineteen seventy-two. Because it doesn't look that old. The building looks very good condition.
But that in your plan.
Well, that's something you can do for Friday. All you gotta do is call the building department and say, hey, run out there see what you can do. Because like he said, he said, we correct camera through it, wouldn't cost anything. It's county. But once it goes to parks, I don't think that's.
The county doesn't have a camera system to run through the lines.
Well, yeah, but you guys. I said, you just want to come out and do it for free. I know how.
Not, not necessarily.
Oh, I guarantee you.
Not necessarily.
I'll go over and talk to the mayor then.
See what you can take care of, David. But I, again, I appreciate.
I've seen all this history.
No.
Yeah.
You know, if we go, if we go through history and we go on the timeline, we go first with, with the Shawnee, not the Shawnee, but the Hopewell, which were mountain builders. And then, uh, Camp Sherman, Air Canal, Air Canal can drive down one oh four. Camp Sherman bow down the, the ended mounts.
Yeah, but do you know that they knew what was there and they intentionally did not go below ground level, being too protective.
And they, and they, that's one, they asked Warren Davis's drawings to know what the mounts were. And then the president of the United States in nineteen thirty-three said rebuild.
Yep. So see that Camp Sherman saved it.
Yeah.
If, if somebody else, if Camp Sherman, we can argue.
It wouldn't even be there.
Yeah, wouldn't even exist. So I mean, how much bigger is Camp Sherman? The more we talk and I think you understand, but I mean, Chillicothe, they either don't care, don't know or not informed, but Camp Sherman probably made Chillicothe what it is.
He brought a lot of growth to Chillicothe. David, thank you. Thanks.
I, I just texted Josh Hedinger to go out to Camp Sherman and evaluate those buildings.
I appreciate.
We'll start that in.
Because more people use it if you had a bathroom.
Right. Dwight's leaving at the end of the year, but I share his passion. So this isn't going to die on the file when he.
Thank you.
He can speak for himself, but.
I'm a veteran, so I'm stuck with it. I'll stick with it.
That was my thing because I kind of got a feel that we were going to be second in developing Camp Sherman. And in my opinion, if that's the case, then I think we don't need to do anything. Until we get that a little more on the upper level thought process in developing Camp Sherman. It's called Camp Sherman Park for a reason. This isn't Poland Park. This isn't, you know, Ross County Park on Charles, or wherever, E to Pike. You know, this is Camp Sherman Park and has been ever since Camp Sherman left it. And there, I don't know where that sign went, but according to the deed, there's supposed to be a sign just like there is out there in Ross County Park, said this land was donated by the federal government.
Somebody's got it in another barn somewhere.
Yeah, well, we need to make that back. You know, that's a title requirement to have and it'll be a title requirement to have when they get it. So as a county, I think we need to figure out what we gotta do. It specifically says what it has to say on it. It specifically says what it has to say on it and it has to be put at the entrance uh, so people know. And, and the reason for that is just like what we're talking about. So people ask questions. So like, federal? Given by the federal? Why? And then they think about it and they research and then they find out. So all these things, it's not just federal government saying, look at what we did. It, it's a reason to make people think and it's not there. Or I couldn't find it. Sorry.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Aaron, you have anything to say?
Sorry, I've got a long time.
I just say, only thing I can tell you is, is if he gets started on something, hold on to your hat. And hold, just hold on for the ride. Because that's.
Well, like I said, there's so many people that would just try to push you off and they think you, you just won't call back. Nobody's got that much time. Well, I've got that much time.
I, I know that the, the pillars that's on High Street, I know they were interested in Camp Sherman. The one, the Warden's House, I didn't know that was.
Yeah, most people don't. And like I said, they're supposed to be concrete. They're painted white. The people in the prison call that the White House. I talked to several people in the prison and.
The prison called it something else.
Yeah.
Because they just had a fire inside out there. One of the buildings out there.
They burned it down. They burned it down intentionally. The suburb township did.
Yeah.
But remember back in the eighties, they, they lost one of the honored ones. Remember there were two honored ones in the eighties? Because I remember going up E to Pike, sitting there watching it. Well, if you got, like I said, if we had a bathroom, I guarantee more people would use it. And my thing, and I want to keep calling, but my thing with the block in the houses, I think that's a, a lame way of doing it. I, I think it's no different than if your house looks good, your neighbor's gonna probably try to up their game a little bit so they don't look like the low end of the neighborhood. So I think the reason why that is turned into what it is is because Camp Sherman Park looks like it's abandoned other than the grass mode. So they figured, well, we can do whatever we want. And they've even slowly tried to encroach on the land because they think, nobody cares. When I made a complaint about the four-wheelers running, I guarantee you, Lander didn't do nothing about it.
Well, we'll talk to him about the four-wheelers soon. I don't like it when they go over our being field.
Well, like I said, if they think nobody's paying attention to it.
We were.
They're gonna keep doing it.
We went down South and they said, we have permission from the landowner. I said, who's the landowner? They said, that guy lives in a brick house. I said, that's wrong landowner. Just sending an email.
Okay. And if you guys got anything, I have all this stuff. I just didn't want to bring you a whole bunch of papers. I got all the contacts I made, all the emails from the federal and the procurement program, all that stuff. Of course, I gave it to the parks because I kept them involved in everything I did. I didn't want to overstretch my boundaries and that's why I came here with you guys. I didn't want to go out there just like going to the prison. But my fear is if we keep waiting, they're gonna just knock those things down, throw them away because they don't even know what they are. They think it's something they made in seventy-five when they were building the, the house.
Eighteen seventy-five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have a request for preparation of funds. Corner, general funds, toxicology reimbursement, date eleven oh five. Uh, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Transfer of funds, Ross County.
You tell me whenever. Like I said, I took it from them.
This is for use by the auditor. This is transfer general. MDGT funds to debt service funds for debt principal and interest payments due twelve one twenty-four. So from general to bond retirement, this is for the engineer. One million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. What was the loan for? Mother vehicle was gas. Subtle. So, all in favor?
All right.
And so the Ross County planning memorandum, please sign the attached water, Ohio Water Pollution Control Lung Fund Payment Request. This is for thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. And it's for one, two, three, four properties. All in favor?
All right.
You can't call me the rest of them.
I gave her the whole pot.
Mr. Evanson, anything?
Um, just that, uh, last week, the week before last, you know, I talked about going to Green County.
Yes.
So you're already up to date on that.
Mr. Low?
No.
Brad, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do.
Jeff, thank you for doing those numbers.
Sure, yeah. I appreciate that. Yeah.
This is sub grant award agreement for the US twenty-three major crime task force. The project is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seventy-two dollars and ten cents. The OCJS funds is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seventy-two dollars and ten cents. Motion, Sonny?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Let's stop doing that for a while.
In my opinion, they should have, they should have.
Jeff, you have anything?
Well, yeah, actually, Ty got in touch with me yesterday and asked if there was any further conversation on the trails thing we discussed several weeks ago. And I said, not that I'm aware of. It's come to the meeting. So Ty said, that's a good idea. So.
What we usually do is first of the month, December, we start making our allocations to who we're gonna get money to next year. Uh, the reentry program, different programs have come and asked of, uh, children services have come in and asked for money. Uh, we'll make that decision, which I think is a pretty, uh, good decision come December first. Is there anything you need from me just to? I think the presentation was good. I think that the lady from Athens was good. I think the concern probably was there's more, no, not more people involved in it. It's just Athens and now Ross County. But that might be the impetus for it to grow. So, uh.
Because I know that was one of my concerns, that dude. Athens was the only one that was involved in it and then they come and ask faster yet to be that. And part of the money.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, that's, Ross would be the second paying member as a county. Part of it is a relatively newer organization, they're four or five years old. The, the impetus was in Athens and they proved themselves with the almost eleven million dollars investment in Athens. But their vision's always been this broader Appalachian region. So Ross, you know, we, we joined the advisory group. There's eighteen advisory counties. Advisory don't pay. You, you know, you donate membership to go and attend and, you know, interact with that. But the next phase of it really is more of a membership role.
Well. That'll be taken care of the first of December.
Okay. If there's any, any information you need from me, um, you know, the next steps from an organe perspective would be, there'd be some type of resolution that you guys will sign. There is a draft, there's a draft.
She has a template for that resolution. That'd be a great thing for us to have before December.
Okay. Make sure you get it.
And what Dwight's referring to with the numbers we put together is funds that are kind of held by Ross County that are outside of the general fund currently, um, that are available for opportunities. And I think, I won't speak for you, but I think it's fair to say that you guys are thinking about an overhead view of all of our opportunities.
David?
I have another one.
Come on. Well, thanks. Well, we're gonna adjourn the meeting at, uh, eleven twenty.